We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Thank you. Terry, take your roll call, please.
Pat Rooney.
Here.
Alan Moore.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kathy Cox.
Here.
Nicole Cullen.
Here.
If you please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the great, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to review and accept the agenda?
So moved.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes. Okay, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Murray for an update on our bond and athletic fields.
Madam President, members of the board, the purpose of today's work session is to inform the board as well as the public of the status of the athletics to date and the fields to date. So I wanted to start by just pointing your eyes here and looking at this informational packet that was sent out originally to the citizens of Lake Havasu City by way of the call for a special election for the bond and the override. In that pamphlet on page five, it specifies or it points out, and I'll just over here for you, but right here, the second row down, it shows the improvements to athletic fields. And by statute, that's what we follow. So we follow, just in a very lump sum, general term, we're obligated to the voting public of this $5.35 million figure to improve our athletic fields, not to exceed that dollar amount. In the voting pamphlet, it does not break it down to specific areas within the district. So we're not bound to make improvements at Jamaica for X amount of dollars, let's say, and then at the high school for X amount of dollars. This just lumps it all together that by law, we cannot exceed this dollar amount for improvements to our athletic facilities. So this refers to what we know through the Citizens for Havasu Schools pamphlet as being the high school, the two high school projects, and the Thunderbolt project. So today, as I highlighted, that 5.35, and I'm going to refer to the Citizens for Havasu Schools breakdown, more of a line item breakdown of that 5.3 million. So we have 2017, that first bond issuance, we have this center or this column straight down here that we're actually working with these dollar amounts at this particular time. This is what was allocated to us on this first issuance. So we look at Lee Barnes Stadium, and there's a budgeted item or an item of which there's $1.531 million allocated for that project, for Lee Barnes Stadium, based on that 2017 issuance. And then you see the breakdown individually of those projected costs at the time before this actually went out to the voting public. As we continue on, Project Three for the Thunderbolt Middle School project was also aligned with this 2017 issuance. You'll see that the high school project, Project Two for the athletic fields down in the baseball field area is not till the 2020 issuance. So these funds will not be available until the second bond issuance, which is projected to be 2020. So speaking of 2017 and focusing on this issuance in which we now have those bond dollars deposited and available to us with the district, Thunderbolt Middle School, to address the track, the site engineering and turf and maintenance of the field, the turf, came out to be $1.551 million budgeted or broken down for Thunderbolt. So total, we are dealing with or using a budget of $3.082 million total available to us for the 2017 bond issuance to address all of our athletic fields however we may choose. So again, going back to the first slide, second slide, I should say, by statute and by the law, we have to address our athletic fields, and it's not necessary for us to break it down in this manner. So that's why tonight, we're here, and the purpose of this work session is to share the preliminary information that we've received and what that projected cost to our athletic fields are looking like at this point for the 2017 issuance. And with us tonight is Richard Clutter for EMC Two, and he's going to come up and present so far what we've come up with. We've had a few meetings already in the small committee with maintenance and the high school staff and some of the coaches to start talking about design and also a board member as well to address design and concept as well as potential costs. So that's where we're at tonight, and I want to address that. Can I switch PowerPoints?
I'm going to use the microphone so I don't have to yell. Thank you. So I just really quick, my name is Richard Clutter and the president of EMC Two Architects. We have been meeting with the districts, basically the project team, for several weeks now to discuss the district's desires on how this project comes together. And we want to start off talking about the high school, which was Project One, the Lee Barnes Stadium, allocated amount of $1,531,000. That included new lighting, artificial turf field, all-weather track, grandstands, press box, concession restroom building. And we've come up with kind of some conceptual design on how that's going to look. And as you can see from that, that we have everything here, we phase one on this area here. So I have a new artificial track, a field. We've realigned that field a little bit. There's where the old bleachers were, so we've kind of moved this out, down a little bit. We have 2,500 seats on the main bleachers, 1,500 across the visitor side, a polyurethane track. We're looking at an artificial turf field. The D areas would be paved with the same surfacing as a track, new parking, a new concession building, and general approvals to this area. And that just shows the concession building, if you want to refer back to that later, I just kept it as an exhibit. But what, this is the breakdown on how these costs work out. In this line here are the itemized costs from the bond. And on this line here is what the actual costs are based on estimates from vendors. And what we found out is that we have a significant shortfall in meaning the budget. And most of that is just because the actual costs of these products are pretty high. The reason for that is because a track is like 60,000 square feet. Because then you consider paving a quarter mile of road, that's kind of what a track's like. It has two inches of asphalt, six inches of AB curve on each side. So the cost of that is the same as paving a street, plus you're putting a special topping on top of it. The same thing with the artificial turf. You're looking at 80,000 square foot of material, so it's like 80,000 square feet of carpet, plus the preparation, the pad, the demolition. So these costs get large, rounded fast, just because the number of square feet are involved in this project. But the other thing that wasn't kind of considered in these costs were that the general contractor's going to charge taxes, fees, markups to do this. And so most of the costs were based on vendor costs and not the actual construction cost. And so what that comes down to right now, if we're looking at a construction cost, $4 million. And then on top of that, you put your soft costs, which are your fees, contingencies, some of the engineering costs, testing lab for independent quality control verification, survey, and those costs. And so the total project cost is $4,630,000. To get that budget, what we originally talked about was reallocating 10% of the bond to this project at $1,600,000, and then carrying $700,000 from Thunderbolt. But that still leaves us with an $800,000 shortfall. We can make this project cost out by eliminating the artificial turf and going to sodic turf. But the feeling of staff is that they'd rather have the artificial turf because for maintenance, for wear, for playability, for being able to get people on the track without wearing the field out. So that's Phase One, and we can see what we're dealing with is an $800,000 shortfall. Fortunately, there are some things that you look at for value engineering. We're using, our approach to this was how would you build a new field? What would you do if you started from scratch? And doing a field that you wanted to have last for 40 years? And so that's kind of maybe the approach to that. So we're using LED lighting for the field, 30-foot candles, artificial turf, using a polyurethane track. We're looking at closed, or looking at I-beam type grandstand construction. And we're looking at new parking, some of these we could do to get the costs back down in budgets. We could reduce the parking, we could make cheaper grandstands, cheaper turf, cheaper track, and just start reducing quality. But I didn't want to make those decisions. Our desire is to, you know, get as much money as we can. So we just want to show you that right now we have an $800,000 bus that we need to work with. For Thunderbolt, the scope of Thunderbolt was a new field and an all-weather track. To make this budget work right now, what we're looking at there is to do a latex track, a new track using existing curbs and not doing a turf field. They're leaving it sodic, just leaving the surface the way it is. They'll just come into the D areas, make, pave those and make those, the high jump and the long jumps and everything upgraded to match the track surface. And that gives us an extra $700,000 to carry over to the other project. And this is the third phase, which is the next bond action, which is for the lower high school fields. And that includes much of the same scope as we have in the other, new concession stands, turf fields, a new lighted practice field, bleachers and dugouts. And there was also a desire to have artificial turf there. Right now, we can make that whole project work as long as we don't do artificial turf. If we go back to artificial turf, then we'll be dealing with the same kind of budget bus right now. But right now, we can make that budget come together without the artificial turf. And so, and this is the turf that our pricing is based on, is the astroturf. It's not the only product out there, and there's, we can talk to some other manufacturers and stuff, but that's an eight-year product, eight-year warranty, third party. It's coated with a special coating that reflects heat so that it doesn't get so hot. And it has your Gmax ratings for safety and security when students are tackled on the turf. But that's the, the gist of where we're at right now is that we have some tough budget decisions to make on how we're going to proceed ahead with getting into the budget.
On the artificial turf?
Yes.
What is the projected lifespan against that eight-year warranty?
Eight years.
So the projected lifespan is eight years?
You could probably go a little longer if you maintain it. By maintaining it, like if you buy an astroturf field, and I'm sure the other manufacturers the same way, is they'll give you the grooming equipment, that's including their cost, and you go through and keep the rubber topped off and keep it groomed. As long as you don't let the rubber get too low, keep the field groomed properly, maintain your track, it'll wear better. But it's a, it's a carpet product, and it's getting walked on all day long, and what happens is the backing normally starts to break down a little bit.
And what happened with the cork-based product that we were originally looking at? Was that just not practical or?
You know, it's a different approach. That product is a little more expensive, and their theory is use cork, astroturf theory is use a reflective coating on the natural filaments because they think the heat comes off the filaments, it's a reflection off the grass that creates the heat. And so they prefer to use a different approach. Every one of these manufacturers has kind of a different approach to selling the product.
So if we were to look at regular sodic turf as opposed to the artificial turf, throughout the whole scope of the project, the numbers work, is what you're saying as presented here?
Yes, we do.
My question is, let's say we can make it last for 10 years, but that means at the end of 10 years, we have to find the money to replace it. And I know a high school that I'm very familiar with, that went stayed, I mean, they had artificial turf for years. And what they do is all of the people who graduated from that high school, lots of doctors, every time it needs to be replaced, they come up with the money, they have a campaign, and they replace it.
Right.
But we don't have anything like that here. Every eight years for this kind of money.
That's right. It's just like putting carpet in your building. It's going to wear out, and you're going to have to replace the carpet every eight, 10 years. And these turf fields are the same way, it's an ongoing replacement cost. You have to factor that against the cost of mowing and water, irrigation, properly maintaining the field. If you look at that cost, if you had that money that you put in the bank each year, you could pay for your replacement in eight years probably. The challenge is you don't really have that money that you have to pay, you know, and hold on to it for eight years. So that is a fact, that you have an ongoing life cycle replacement cost of about every eight years, you're going to have to come in there and replace the turf. It won't be this costly because you're not having to redo the base and the curbs or anything. All you're going to do is replace the carpet itself and the field.
Another concern I have is with this particular high school, but what they've learned is they have to keep an antiseptic on hand. Every time a player, it's just an abrasion, I mean, it doesn't even break the skin to the naked eye. But every time he comes off, or they call them off, and they have to spray them down because the artificial turf has a, something about it, sap infections and other kinds of things. And it's just constant. I mean, that's a definite concern.
Can we go back to the screen that showed the spreadsheet? Thank you.
This is Phase One, which one do you want? The Phase One?
Phase One.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I also point out on that spreadsheet, that 10% bond reallocation, by law, we can reallocate up to 10% of bond funds to any other project within that bond issuance. So for example, this first issuance was 16.9 million. We can redistribute or reallocate 1.69 million to another area within that bond, overall bond, to move additional monies to other projects. So for example, if we are, if we have extra money in HVAC, for example, let's say the SFB is being very generous in awarding us dollars to replace some of our conditioning units, and we're able to take some money from HVAC that's currently budgeted there, I'm just saying, John's giving me the evil eye on that.
Don't take anybody as an example.
But just saying, as an example. We could take some of those dollars and then push them towards athletics. So by law, we do have that flexibility. So that's why you're seeing that 1.6 million up there. That's 10% of this first issuance. So we would have to find that money in other areas within the bond and move them to athletics and make it available for athletics. For example, there's a possibility that, and I just speak as a possibility, that the high school, which we have money budgeted for painting, for exterior weatherization, that project may be funded by the SFB. So we could take the dollars that are currently there and budget it for repainting the exterior of the high school and move that, and that would be part of that 1.69 million dollars. Then also the Thunderbolt carryover, we're talking carryover there, but if we were going to truly need to address all the areas here at Thunderbolt for 1.551 million dollars, then we wouldn't have anything to carry forward to the high school. So the point of this and the overall objective of this work session is to just paint the picture that what's currently budgeted here at 1.531 million dollars per the Citizens for Havasu Schools pamphlet is nowhere close to what we need to actually do, what needs to be done at the high school, just in Phase One, or Project One. So there is going to have to be a careful balance of moving money legally to other, from other areas within the bond to athletics, and two, a prioritization. We need to prioritize as to what do we, what is a non-negotiable at the high school for Lee Barnes Stadium? And where are we willing to give and bend a little bit so that we can move that cost down to where we could actually make this project and complete it? So that's, that's why we're here. We can't go up and start moving dirt and promising that all of this would be addressed, knowing that we're facing a shortfall right from the beginning. So that's why we're having this meeting to communicate that clearly, that there is a need to be creative and start looking at figures now before, before we get to May. And if people are disappointed that we made these decisions and cut corners, or the public would view that as cutting corners, when in all reality, we need to try to get within the budget.
Mike Becker, a question. If I'm understanding right, the red is what we projected when we asked for the bond, right?
Yes, that left.
And this is our, how do, how do we possibly go $100,000 for restrooms and concessions to $562,000? It, you know, it looks to me like either we did no planning, or when the money came in, we said, hey, let's do everything.
You know, I can't speak to that specific area, but I can speak to some of those. Mr. Becker and I did look at, for an example, a lighting quote.
Yeah, the lighting, that's another one.
Let me use that as an example because I can actually speak to that because I had my hands on the quote. The quote that I personally saw had those types of numbers there on the left side, the $85,000 figure, real big on the top of the quote. But then if you read down into the next paragraph or two in the more finer print, it gave you a list of what it did not cover. And there was quite a, quite a list. It didn't cover labor, it didn't cover, there was an extensive list of what that $85,000 quote did not cover, or was not included in that quote. So I can't speak, I know that this was, this was developed, this is several years in the making, so I just don't have the answer to why it was $100,000 then and why it's $500,000 now.
And I'd like my dad, excuse me, that like the lighting, that we're looking at an LED lighting system there. If we went to an HID system, we could probably knock $50,000 off that number. If we went to some really inexpensive systems, we might even knock more money off of that. But what the advantage of LED is it doesn't use a lot of electricity, it has been cut off, it didn't light low, and the bulbs don't have to replace for 10 years. So if you go back to HID now, you're going to be relamping every couple of years and maintenance costs. So that's one of the ways we can get the cost down, we can say, okay, we're not going to do LED, we're going to go to HID, we're going to save $100,000 here, we're going to go to the concession building and say, all we're going to do is just put restrooms in there, no concession, or we're not going to put any storage in there, we'll get that number down. We can start whittling things down, but we want to kind of present what, what we would normally do on a, on a new high school.
Well, I'm afraid, you know, the people approved a bond to us, and they approved a certain amount of money. We have responsibility to stay within that bond. And like I said, it looks to me like either we did not plan properly, or now that we've got the bond, we feel like we're sitting in a picnic, we're going to have everything.
Well, if you go back to the Citizens, we don't have to appear, but if you go back to the Citizens for Havasu pamphlet, that's what was communicated, and that all of those projects or those parts, the elements of that stadium are listed there, the dollar figures are just off. That's, the dollar amounts are off.
I think that they look different, but I don't know that they're off, but I'm just calculating in my head because we're looking at concessions for Lee Barnes and the lower, but that's all included on restroom and concessions, correct?
No, that's just for one.
That's just for the upper?
Yep.
Then yeah, it's way up.
So can I ask you a question on the red numbers? How were those arrived at? Who was coming up with those?
For the numbers on the far left, the red highlighted there.
Those are the Havasu Unified School District numbers that were given to the committee who put the bond together.
Okay, but where were you getting them from?
From the school district, Carl Thompson.
And then I have another couple of questions on the, on your sports lighting, does that include moving the?
That's labor inclusive.
Want to talk about, does that include moving where the current lights are?
Yes, that's, that's all we wish, we're going to take out those ones that are in the field, move them back behind the, and do it properly.
Okay, wait. And then if you go to a turf, but you have an all-weather track, because as I recall, out at Thunderbolt, they had sort of a crown, and a lot of that water would run onto the track, and it helped deteriorate it. And so you're going to have this sprinkler issue.
The track design includes a drainage system as part of the cost.
Okay.
And that's, again, that's why that number starts to creep up, is because you have to, you have to consider the drainage system. So if you're just looking at the track itself, yeah, it's cheaper, but if you do it right, it's got to be drainer, else you'll have the same problem, you'll have it deteriorate your track a couple of years.
And then the other thing, so, and fencing, we got down, what is it, 50,000 up there for fencing? One of the things that wherever I've been where they have these all-weather tracks and fields, they really restrict access to those sites, you know, public access. And the fencing we've got, what type, how, what type of fencing would you replace it with?
We'd probably put some, well, again, it's a budget, or a question whether we're going to use chain link or use some decorative iron. What we see on a lot of high schools is that what they do is they restrict people running on the inside lanes, because that's where it gets all worn out. And so they'll put something there so if people are going to come and jog at night, make them run on the outside, and then your track loss lasts a lot longer.
I've seen that up in Vegas, they'll have those gates that can swing out.
Yes.
Which forces, they'll be on four different locations, right down near the quarters, and it forces them to run to the outside.
And that's a very expensive solution to keep your traffic from getting worn down.
So one more, one more question on, on regular turf versus artificial turf. What is the life expectancy of that field if we laid it out with regular turf? When would we have to go back in and re-level it for re-sodic? Just a good ballpark guess.
That depends on how you maintain it. If you're, if you're fertilizing and watering it regularly, you shouldn't have to replace it. It's, you know, and go in and sand it every once in a while and start to get some divots and settle. But if maintenance is, if a really, what's the word, comprehensive program of groundskeeping is carried on, you shouldn't have to take the sod out, the last.
I'm just curious, has anybody taken a look at the, what it would cost, I mean, as in, if we did sod and we did soil, what injuries to our players would that cause versus each field?
There's, there's actually studies that have been done on natural grass and artificial turf and different varieties of artificial turf. Penn State was the one that I saw during the bond process that had probably the most comprehensive one. And while some of the earlier stuff, as, as they're ramping some of these products up, showed higher, now with some of the newer products that are out there as far as turf goes and so on, it's almost a wash. Six, one half dozen of them. far as turf goes and, and so on, it's almost a wash. It's six and a half dozen of them.
And there's new standards coming out for the G-max, which is your rating, your cushioning rating, it's just gone up, and so the track that we're, have here is based on having the higher G-max.
Could you flip this spreadsheet to Thunderbolt?
So when we were going through the bond, um, cause I sat in on all the meetings for athletics, and it was supposed to be field turf, not AstroTurf, is...
It, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. We, and we could use either one, it's just, we just got some pricing from AstroTurf, cause they weren't working over.
Is pre, is AstroTurf cheaper?
Um, yes.
So I guess that makes me wonder why we're so short if we had budgeted for the field turf and the AstroTurf is, is cheaper and we're still over.
We didn't.
I'm trying to figure out what we miss. Is it just the taxes, the contingency, the...
A lot more than that. We didn't actually budget. We, we got vendor estimates and not, and not bill-out estimates is our problem.
Okay. So none of the labor was included or taxes?
I think field turf is a fine product, and we could probably just twist their arms really hard and probably make them match AstroTurf's cost if we wanted to, but, um, but these are pretty tight numbers that we got out of these guys.
I, I'm almost leaning, especially when I hear that, that in order to get the numbers right, that we're going to that rubberized fill, I'm almost leaning to going back to natural grass. I, our, our, uh, package that we put out, and I was on that bond committee, said the word turf, didn't say standard turf, it didn't say AstroTurf, it didn't say field turf, it said turf. And I think if we've got the right drainage system on this, it may be the wise option to absorb a little bit of the water and the maintenance back into this and go back to regular grass. And that makes all of our numbers start to work. Now, we're gonna have to do a little bit of robbing and peeling to pay Paul to do it, and it's unfortunate that we're here talking about this, because it really wasn't planned that well, but I think, I think if we had to make it work, that's probably the right way, in my humble opinion, to make it work.
And do I understand right that we're talking about transferring some of the money which we intended to use from Thunderbolt forward to the high school?
Well, that's, that is part of this proposal, and trying to reduce, well, keeping, trying to make the budget work, it would be taking some dollars from Thunderbolt and, and reallocating it to the high school.
What does Thunderbolt give in that situation?
Under this scenario, Thunderbolt gets a new track. We're gonna keep the existing curves, the existing curves are, is a 400-meter track, and so we don't have to tear the curve out, so we're gonna save the curves, we have the new asphalt, new, new sub-bays, new drainage, and, uh, and then a latex track out right now. And then for the turf itself, we're not gonna do anything except irrigation and, uh, and sod.
Is there room in Thunderbolt for a baseball field?
No, because the outfield isn't deep enough and softball's not.
So I'm just looking over my old notes from the 2014 bond and from the last bond, and the whole purpose for the turf was to save us upwards of 750,000 in water costs for 10 years.
Do we pay any water costs?
Well, we're in an agreement at the moment, but I don't know how long, you know, all good agreements come to an end, so I don't know.
Now, going to an artificial turf though, especially in this climate, from, from our meetings that we've had as a committee, you still suggested that other districts, including like U of A, um, they're using water cannons to, cause they have to cool down the field because of the...
U of A has water cannons, and they're putting a ton of water.
They're still, they're still... They still have to wet it down to cool it down.
Sorry, what were you using?
I actually just spoke with the Scottsdale Athletic Director for the entire district, they just put in a three-turf field, they did not go with the water cannon ground. That was something that they just chose not to. Uh, now the temperature of the field, it does get hot, and so when that happens, they go practice on it.
They actually designed it, and they designed it, they value engineered it out.
But they also went with a higher-end turf, um, basically like Topolone type, but...
They, they have field turf.
I got a question, not that, I mean, you guys do what you wanna do, but if you go and stay with regular sod, I think we're gonna have the same problem we have now in about a year or two, but we never let that field rest. That field, you know, you can keep, you can keep the G-max rating on it, when you first start off, they're the same, I agree as turf as AstroTurf, but then within a year, that ground hardens up, cause we can't, we don't have the, the equipment, the manpower to keep it in the way that they do the real turf fields, so we keep our G-max rating. We go from 100 to 200 in a year, you know, like I say, and then like I say, cause we never let our fields rest, we're being played on six days a week, you know, all year long.
What's the employee cost if we added that capability? What does that look like over a 10-year period?
That would come from Denise.
You're in this conversation.
Boy, the question just got really...
You know, like we talked about before, you know, I figured it'd be like, if you have a black town athletics grounds person that could take care of that, you figure out, I don't know, what is a, a grounds guy?
The grounds person is probably actually...
Yeah, actually, no, it's turf, it didn't, now, we're not talking, you know, grass movers, we're talking actual athletic ground.
Who's, who's that guy's name? Cap, who was that guy's name when I was in school? He used to go out and clean the sand and the whole...
I think Bill Colton. When you say they're, in other words, that they're not allowed to rest because they have PE classes and they have, uh, practice on the football field, so...
Yeah, it's not baseball, it's soccer, it's not soccer, it's softball.
Yeah, but, uh...
We need a practice field, then it would be better. If we had a practice field down below, we'd...
So actually, uh, some of that could be done by, uh, designating other areas as a practice field, and you get some longevity out of that, that football field, right?
Yeah, well, like the, the, when he showed, actually has, the one I have, has an actual practice field designed in.
Right.
And that, and if we had that, but I don't think that's till the second part.
That's too much.
And then we could rest that field, and it would last longer if we, if we, you know, started. But at the moment, we don't have that, so it means everybody's gonna be up there on...
The PE classes are out there, and then everyone practices out there, and, uh, it, it, it's the place that, for some reason, everyone's at.
Yep.
So it goes from the fall to the winter, and then the, uh, and actually, the only time it gets sort of a reprieve would be in the spring, doesn't it?
We have trouble even watering it, cause we have to go, we gotta cut, it's 10 days here, five days here, four days here, and that's tough to do when you say, "Okay, we can't put any water on for 10 days," when it's 112 degrees outside. That's not good for it. That, that's all we can do.
I just have a question. Um, as you're talking about all of the infrastructure for artificial turf, um, and then saying that when it comes time to replace, you just have to replace the carpet, so to speak.
Yes.
So what is the difference in cost for that?
Um, I'm not sure.
As opposed to the amount that we...
I'm gonna say it's probably in the range of $100,000.
Less, or it's $100,000 to replace it?
$100,000 or so to replace it, and I could get those numbers.
That would, that would probably be good to, to dial in. But I, but I think, I think with all the controversy on the rubber and fill, that looking at that cork-based product may be a better solution, just, just from a public perspective.
Right, well, and... So you say that on the artificial turf, the padding, so is, that, that doesn't ever have to be replaced?
Um, it depends if you do a pattern on, this price doesn't have a pad. If we went with a pad, then we'd have to add another $100,000 in there, but the pad, yeah, when you do it, you do a new pad, a new carpet, a new fill.
But what you're talking about is just new carpet?
New carpet, new fill, yeah.
No pad.
And then the fill, you're, like, so you're dressing it every year, because you're having to add it, is it just dispersed and blown away?
Well, that would be every eight years, right?
Yes.
But there are some pads out there that you can use over and over and just replace the carpet part, if you buy an upgraded pad that makes it...
That's all it's us.
Yeah, and there, there are out there, and that also keeps your G-factor, G-max factor, you know, cause no matter what you put, you put cork, rubber, whether you put sand on there, trying to keep, you're gonna have different spots. I've seen how they're testing, I'm sure you have too, where you can have, in one place it'll be at 100, someplace else it'll be at 250. So, uh, by using the pad under there, which I hope we go for, would help to keep it all at around 100, no matter where the cork or the, the rubber gets pushed to, if we went with that.
And we can go back and talk to FieldTurf and get some price, compare to what price it's gonna be, and then the next step is also to get the construction manager at risk on board, and then you can start validating our costs, and help us find some ways to get some of these numbers down also.
Got it.
Now, when you, you say that you're gonna go to FieldTurf, so you would be barbieing or dealing exclusively with FieldTurf or the subcontractors or whoever else is in charge of this?
We'll just get some comparable numbers, but I think, if it was me, I would leave all options open, so when we have to put the trigger on, on that.
So is there something, I was just at the Phoenix Rising Stadium in Phoenix, it's a semi-pro soccer team, so they have permanent portable bathrooms that are super nice. Are there some creative ways that we can keep the stadium what the stadium is, but cut costs as, cause what the bathrooms are, it's really, really high, and so these are portable bathrooms, but they're not like gross porta-potties, so are there things that we can do that we're still getting all the things, but we're cutting costs in other ways?
Yes, and again, it all comes down to maintenance costs. Uh, we can, we can build this thing out of wood and get it for $100,000, and you'll be replacing it every year, replacing all the fixtures, because they're such high abuse areas, and so that's, that's what we look at when we're building these buildings, particularly out in athletic situations, build them out of masonry, use stainless steel fixtures, and, uh, build them like a, a penitentiary a little bit.
So if we're looking at AstroTurf or artificial turf, are we going to the manufacturer to get these prices, or we going through a middle?
We're going to the subcontractor.
And why's that? Why can't we go to the manufacturer and ask them?
Because the manufacturer doesn't install it. She's like carpet, I can buy from them.
Well, I understand they don't install, but can we get the product from them, bring it to us?
They don't sell it.
And then we can just contract that out?
There was a guy I just spoke with the other day, that said he had exclusive rights to install FieldTurf, they were moving towards exclusive rights for FieldTurf in Arizona.
Yeah, well, it's a full...
I think he doesn't have it yet.
Yeah. It's, it's either the guy or they're going for it.
Right.
So we can't talk to any of these manufacturers?
No, cause they don't distribute that way. They sell through, they sell through their distributors, distributors.
Oh, okay. I just think it's kinda odd.
Carrie. When you say, um, that you think it needs to be replaced in eight years, is there any historical background on school districts, because we've been playing on several turf fields, like in Coconino, Chaparral, several of them, um, and the entire time I've been coaching, those haven't been replaced, those same fields, so it's been clearly more than eight years.
Yeah, it's very possible that if it's well-maintained, that it could last a lot longer. We can also, you can also go to a 10-year warranty.
Yeah, football.
Football, they just gotta do one.
This year.
Just installed from September 13th.
But that lasted how long?
I don't know how long.
That's, that's been the first, that'll be the first time I see it in my 20-year warranty period, so for me, I think it's looking more at 15-year, being, you know, kind of conservative.
I would say...
I would want to see what the research is at other school sites, because we just throw out, like, oh, they say eight years.
It's just like your school inside, you know, you could have a carpet in some rooms that lasts a little longer, and then carpet in the halls is gone, is gone in four years, so it just depends on how much it was used.
So we could get 30 years, cause we get 30 years out of it.
I personally think, I think the reason they warrant it for eight years is cause that's pretty much why.
Right, and also, sometimes with schools, they go longer because the schools don't have the funding, so you just make it last until you get some funding.
Well, I feel like the whole athletics bond was built around this field turf, specifically this field turf, and for injury, you know, sake, and for our heat, and for water, and so I really would not, I would really hate to see us cut there so that we can keep all the other things, and I like Jamie's idea about, you know, getting creative with the bathrooms, and I've, I've had some really nice bathroom experiences in the Wallowis with, uh, you know, temporary bathrooms, a very nice temporary wash setup, you know, so, I, but I would really, I'm not for, that's not what we sold people, that's not what we went to the public for, was for regular grass and watering and all that, so.
And I, I, you know, I know Al's point, I, I, I agree with the point he's making, but I feel that, that that's what the public thought that they were going to get, and that we need to figure out some way to make it happen, uh, whether it's the, the school facilities board pitching in with the opinion at the high school, and we, I think we need to go ahead and explore that and try to, try to make it happen, but I still, I don't, I just am very concerned down the road. I will not be on the school board in eight years, so it won't make a bit of difference. Nobody's gonna throw rock tomatoes at me from then, but when we have to come up with the money for this turf again, that really bothers me.
But you're talking about $100,000 to replace?
Well, the high school I, I was referring to, this is their third time, and they have gone without replacing what's underneath, and they said it didn't, hasn't worked, and this time they're replacing everything, uh, so, uh, and, and we're very hot here, I think, and this comparative ground talking about, this is very hot, and that has to affect things.
I know there's effects, like, the purchasing, cause I understand the 2020, but it would seem to me that the cost saving could happen on the lower field and maintain the facility of the upper field, because the usage and the seasons and how often the track is used and keeping water off the, on whether track is clearly important, or more important than having the turf on a softball field. So, like, you can save, save much more on the lower end, but I just think you're crazy not considering turf, or can't progress on a football field right now and the usage right now, and the condition it has been in, and why there's so much water turnout for this specific issue is because there's been so much trouble of being able to maintain the usage on that upper field. Where baseball and softball, it would be nice in utilization with the community, but the turf, the turf's more important to preserve the track along with the usage of the field up at the top.
So we, to that point then, to allow this project to move forward and get completed by May, uh, that's the goal. We would need the money available to us now, we can't wait for 2020. 2020's, uh, project two of that lower field is for 2020, we can't touch into that. So what we could do though, and what we would have to do, is then look at Thunderbolt, cause we're, we're all addressing this as one big athletic complex, look at Thunderbolt, and what can Thunderbolt, um, what do they need now, and do what they need now, and then if we can save money down on the lower field, look at addressing Thunderbolt a little bit further down the road.
Plus, it'll be part of the valuable project.
But we need to address the football complex in phase one, we need, we need available cash now, so that would be another way to look at it. Not neglecting Thunderbolt, but we still may have to, to change some things there, but look at perhaps addressing them a little bit further down the road.
And what will the bidding process look like for this, so that we can see if we can cut in on the progress?
We're gonna, I reckon, see him at risk, and he'll go out and get normally three bids on each item, competitive bids. And they also do pre-constructions, so they'll help us upfront, identify some places where we can got money, and where we can save some money, and that'll help that process tackle those numbers up.
So one of the things that, that I, I heard from the board mostly and the audience is that the turf is, and we're looking at the priorities, the turf is higher priority for... perhaps than the restroom concession stand or other areas. One of the suggestions that I would make is that if we know that if we go with sawed, you would have to hire a full-time groundskeeper for that field. And if we go with turf, you're going to have to replace it. And so the, the board could actually designate an account and then budget or X number, you know, maybe you put 50,000 a year away so that at the end of eight years, you have the funding set aside now to replace that turf. It doesn't have to be, you know, out there and what are we gonna do in eight years? I think that we just plan to that as a part of our regular budget process, understanding that it's, if you save for it, it's a lot easier to find that smaller amount each year than it is to come up with whatever it might cost. And we know the cost is gonna go either up or down in eight years, just like this seems to be one of these. So I just would add that into the discussion. Either way, we have options.
I don't know really anything about these temporary restrooms that Jamie was talking about. So I just wanna make sure that we understand that the high school PE classes use those restrooms every day. It's not like we're gonna bring restrooms in for a game. So just for that, I, I just wanna make that clear. Maybe that doesn't matter and the temporary ones are out there permanently.
They're literally, they're just like, like a portable building that we would teach in.
By code, we're gonna have to have a certain amount of restrooms compared to whatever our stands. And the ones we have now are not gonna be.
Oh, that's true.
We need considerably more toilet fixtures out there.
I have a question. Do we have to have two concession stands? Could you move the concession stand up to the top corner where everybody shares that?
The problem we have right now is we're going up to 2,500 seats. So we need like 46 toilet fixtures to meet code.
She's talking about the locations.
We can change the location, but we still need to get, we need two buildings worth of toilets, basically, to meet code right now.
So the concession stand and the toilets are the same building?
Yes.
So that's why the cost is up skyrocketing because there's maybe 46. There's not a field that I didn't in Arizona that has 46.
We'll have to meet with the pro efficiency, but they'll allow us to reduce it. But if we would, if they, if they said we can't change that, then that's what we're doing.
So the capacity for this, for the field?
It's based on your seating and your stance. So if you agree to seating, there's nothing to worry about.
But you said that we were going for 2,500?
We're going to 2,500 right now.
Okay. Are we going up to 3,000?
We have 25, the home side, 500 in the visitor's room.
Should we say that again? We have what?
You say, yeah.
2,500 in the home side and 500 in the visitor's right now, based on the cost we presented.
Seat capacity? That's what we have.
So what do we have today?
That's what we have today.
Jessica, we have today?
2,000 right now.
There's, there's information in the athletic office that had been passed down. It was there when I got there, that says our seating capacity for the stadium right now is close to 2,500. But when we went out and counted, they came up with a lower estimate.
Is the code about bathrooms? Is that local or is that state?
International. It's international.
So it's not a code, it's just a recommendation?
No, it's, it's international building code. The state, the city has adopted the international building.
Oh, the city has adopted.
No, the city has.
But I mean, it's like Carrie says, where have you gone that has that many bathrooms?
That's a few places.
I mean, couldn't we ask the city for a waiver?
We could ask for a variance.
A variance?
So if there's no other questions, we're gonna wrap it up. And then I'm just gonna ask that Mrs. Asire and Mr. Murray come back with a proposal about how we can keep the field turf and what we can do, like an actual proposal. We've all talked about a lot of things, but I think the field turf is really important. The one thing we promise out of, you know, the whole athletics.
And that's, that's why we had this meeting is because we wanted to see where, where the non-negotiables were and where the priorities are, are, are. So that's, now we kinda have that. We can build from here. So we'll build around artificial turf and we'll see where we build.
And the track, the track is still set.
That's part of the thing.
Well, it's set, but we'll, we'll make sure.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it.
Can you also forward, Mr. Powell, the, the, I just want those numbers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Seth Rennings?
Yeah.
Don Mousen?
Yes.
Kevin Fox?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.